Good evening and welcome to the regular meeting of the school committee of the town of Foxborough. Today is November 18th, 2019, and we have a great teaching and learning highlight coming up. It's seven o'clock, so we'll get started with our open public comment. Is there anyone here for the open public comment period? All right, seeing none. We're going to move on to approval of minutes, and we have two sets of minutes this evening. The first is the October 17th, 2019 special meeting. That was the joint financial summit with the Board of Selectment Advisory Committee and the school committee. Does anyone have any changes or additions, subtractions? I don't, and thank you, Richard, for doing these.
The only thing I'll mention is that Rob was in the meeting with us, but the way adjourned and where we got separated in the town hall, it was just me and you sitting there. So that was why it was a two oh vote.
Right.
It wasn't that he ran away, or just that somehow we just weren't sitting together. So that's all I can say.
Appreciate that. Thank you, appreciate that.
That does make sense.
Yeah, because I-
We went from three to two.
Went from three to two, and I'm like, what happened to him?
We didn't lose Rob.
We didn't lose him, we just-
All right, well, thank you, I think, just for, you know-
Yeah.
-keeping track of these things. We noticed the meeting and to have minutes is a good thing. Would anyone like to make a motion?
I'd motion we approve the minutes from October 17th.
Second.
Any further comment? All those in favor? All right, three, zero. Do you want to abstain?
I have to abstain.
Three, zero, one. Thank you. And our second set of meeting minutes are from our October 28th, 2019 regular meeting. That was a long one, with a lot of good information. Does anyone have any changes or additions to the set of minutes?
I don't.
I did not.
So I make a motion that we accept the minutes from the November-
October.
Thank you, October eight.
Eighteenth.
Thank you, meeting, as written.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Four, zero, zero. I should say before we move any further that you may notice we're missing Ms. Lord at the table. She's unable to be with us tonight, but we will carry on without her tonight. Okay, so coming up next is our very exciting teaching and learning highlight, Project Lead the Way. Dr. Mello, Ms. Stacy Sharon, and a Hearn Middle School students. Would you like to lead us off with Project Lead the Way?
Absolutely. I'd love to invite all of you to come on up to the table of honor. You may, if you'd like to stand, yes. So the school committee knows a little bit about Project Lead the Way, and tonight I'm excited that you'll get to hear the firsthand perspective from students and from Ms. Sharon, since she is one of the fabulous teachers who is teaching it to all of you. But for a little bit of background, Project Lead the Way is growing in the state of Massachusetts as an opportunity for students to explore the pathways for computer science, engineering, and biomedical. And in 2017, the Mass STEM Hub sort of more publicly started to promote this and the grant funding that went along with it, so that more schools could get on board. Currently, there's 200, over 250 schools in Massachusetts who are part of Project Lead the Way. We're really happy to be among them. There's over 10,000 schools in the U.S., and I just gave you a little infographic that looks like this, just to share some key points about Project Lead the Way that I think really piqued our interest. We knew that in our middle school, we really wanted to give you all a taste of what some of these pathways look like. So maybe when you get to high school and you're taking your classes, you might discover what you're interested in. So students who graduate high school and who have experienced Project Lead the Way are three times more likely to go into the field of STEM, and that's a pipeline that we're trying to build, especially in the state of Massachusetts. That's why we partnered with the Mass STEM Hub. Students get real authentic practice in collaboration, communication, problem solving, researching. It's hands-on, it's minds-on. It's very different than a regular class, which I'm sure they're going to talk to us about, right? And we find through the research that students who participate in Project Lead the Way, they're more persistent, they have more grit, they stick with things a little longer. Things aren't easy in this class, and you're going to find that out. There's a lot of curious people in there. When I've come to visit their class, they're really pondering problems. So we were really excited that we had this opportunity and that we received three sources of grant funding. We had a grant through Project Lead the Way, which is actually the 1-8 Foundation. We had a grant through Meditech, which is a great community partner of ours, and then Partners in Patriotism to support this. And Ms. Sharon went for a whole week?
I did, Monday through Friday.
A whole week of training in New Ham-
Uh, no, Baltimore.
Oh, Baltimore, sorry. In Baltimore. So teachers do have to go, and they have to get trained and learn everything that you're learning, just the same way that you're learning it, so that they know what to expect. So our hats off to the teachers who were trained, and we know that your partner, Mrs. Ryan, couldn't be here this evening, but I'm sure she's here in spirit. So I will turn it over to you and let you tell us all about your experiences so far.
It has been a phenomenal experience, from the training in June, July, when I went, to implementing it here at the Hearn, the support that we've gotten from the school, the excitement that we've gotten from the kids, it's been absolutely incredible. I'm going to go through a quick curriculum overview. The last slide, I'm going to warn you, I'm going to go pretty quick through, because I don't want these guys to get too much information from that last slide. Because it's all about the excitement and building up of a mystery.
Ah.
Which, you know, for anyone, like, a mystery, a good mystery is going to pull you in. Okay, so our medical detectives and Dr. Mello stole some of my thunder here, but it sparks engagement, illuminates possibilities into the medical field. Students get to explore the medical field through hands-on, project-based learning curriculum. The curriculum builds, is built to empower students to lead their own discovery. These guys got to create their own lab experiments, where they got to then test it, collect data, and analyze their results, which was really cool. It boosts classroom engagement. These, they come into class and they're ready, it's the last period of the day, you think they'd be exhausted and done with the day, and they're like, ready to roll. They get down there, oftentimes we're running, we're in a different classroom location, we're running down there to catch with them, and they're like, let's go, let's go. They grab their stuff, they know the routine, and they hit the ground running. It's fantastic.
And I'll just say, even when they're leaving, when the bell rings, they're still talking about it as they're walking out the door.
As they're walking out, which is fantastic. It drives collaboration, they're working together with lab partners to complete activities, and it inspires them to think deeper. The curriculum overview, there's three base, there's three units in it, the disease detectives, and I'll talk about each one briefly, the secrets of the nervous system, which we're in the middle of right now, and then the last unit is called outbreak, and that's the one I'm going to skip through pretty quickly. But in each activity, in each unit, they start off with exploring information, they've got hands-on lab activities, and then there's a problem that they have to solve. And they have to use the information that they learned at the beginning of the unit in order to solve that problem. So Unit 1 was disease detectives, and I think I have some pictures of some of my students up here, too. But the students discover how healthcare professionals act as medical detectives to identify, treat, and prevent illnesses in their patients. Students collect data to interpret vital signs, and then they evaluate their patient health, explore different infectious disease agents, design and conduct experiments, and test effectiveness of antibiotics on bacteria. They actually got to swab the agar plates with bacteria, they placed the antibiotics with the bacteria. In the end of the lesson, students got to collect and analyze medical data to diagnose a patient with a mystery illness, and we had real-life people join us to pretend as patients. It was fantastic, and I cannot believe I don't have a picture of it. We had all sorts of people come in, we had parents come in, we had previous employees, Mrs. Abrams came in, Mrs. Spinelli came in. It was fantastic. And the kids got a huge kick out of it, because they had to come up with the questions they'd want to ask their patient, and so they could try to figure out a diagnosis. It was a lot of fun, I thought. The one that we're currently in right now, the secrets of the nervous system, students are introduced to the human body as a collection of body systems with a primary focus on the nervous system. Students create diagrams of how the body responds to stimuli, create neuron model GIFs. Yeah, I have one of those, kind of fun. Identify parts of the brain responsible for stimuli and perform sheep brain dissection. They're doing that tomorrow.
Ooh.
They're like, ready to roll. At the culminative, they're going to get another patient file with some nervous system dysfunctions, another secret dissection, that's top secret. And then students will create, they're all looking at me like, boy, boy. Students will create an educational pamphlet to help their patient understand what their medical condition was. And then, this is the GIF, how to hit play. So if you notice the, or, the green dot on the side here on the dendrites, that's your stimuli. Let's see if I can get it to play. And you can see they made a series of video clips. It goes pretty quick, but you can see, if I hit it again, you can see the green dot showing as it passes down. Yeah, that knee, did it one more time, through the synapse. So they had a great, they had a great time. So it incorporates not only the medical field, but it also incorporates technology as well. They had a good time, we had a good time playing around with video and cameras and the synapses, it was fun. This is our outbreak, and this is what I'm going to go through pretty quickly, but they have a mysterious event that takes place, and they have to analyze what that event is, what the disease is, and then help the community to solve it in future. It's a student-centered approach, and so I'd love to turn it over to the students. And I think they talked about who was going first, who was going first.
I'm going, I'm going first.
Awesome.
So I- Introduce yourselves first before you start.
I'm Chase, I'm part of this class, and I think I've had a lot of fun in this class. We work together in pairs for most of the activities, and we do a lot of learning in the beginning, and then we have like a project or like a lab at the end, and we work together, and it really challenges us to find, like, the answers to each of the labs. So my favorite activity when we did this was the, when we swabbed agar plates with bacteria, and we used antibiotics to figure out which one was the most effective against the bacteria. I think, like, it really showed us how anti, antibiotics worked, and like, how they actually affect us in the real world.
That's great.
Who's next? Jackson.
Well, my favorite activity so far, well, I can't wait for the brain dissection tomorrow. And it was really fun, like, prepping for it, and like, we had to like, make like, like, we had to like, make little labels like you saw on the brain before, and then we had to like, color the brains, so we would know where to put everything. And then, I like how the class, like, mixes the houses, like, so you're not in like, the classes that you're in, like, not just the kids that you know, like, in the classes that you're with every day. It's like, different kids, so that's good. It's really good, because it like, shows you like, how like, the medical field works, and like, that, like, in the one that we did with like, all the adults that came in and pretended to be our patients, like, it showed us like, how doctors like, ask surgical questions, and they like, ask everything for a purpose, and not just like, all at once, so that the patient can understand. And I hope this class like, makes it to the high school, because it would be really fun to like, go on with this class.
Do they have this at the high school level, Dr. Mello?
We have, Project Lead the Way has a biomedical engineering course for high school.
Of course, okay.
And we're actually going on December 3rd to Sandwich Public Schools to take a look at it.
Excellent.
To see if we can bring it to Foxborough High School.
I think that we would all like to see that happen.
It's awesome.
Yeah.
It's so cool. We went and saw it, and it was like, Ms., Dr. Mello was like, I want you to go check this course out. And I was like, okay, sure. And I went with Mrs. Ryan and a couple other teachers, and it was like, hook, line, and sinker. We left, and I was like, okay, what do I need to do? Tell me what I need to do to go.
My favorite activity was when we swabbed the bacteria and put it in the agar plates with the antibiotics, because I thought that was cool to see different types of antibiotics and the labels, and I thought it was cool, because some bacteria grew in our antibiotics, because some people left the lid open, like, just a little bit, and that was cool, if like, even a little bit of air could make bacteria grow in it. And I really like working with partners, because it makes it a little less hard, because if you, if you're stuck on an idea, then you can ask them for help, or you can help them. And I think that when we put a lot of stuff in our notebooks, that's helpful, and when we learn about stuff before we do a project, I think that's helpful, because we know a little bit about it before we work with what we're doing.
Okay, and what's your name?
Chloe.
Chloe, thank you, Chloe.
So I guess I'm last, then.
And introduce yourself.
So I'm Luke, and I'm in this course, obviously. So this is more of like, reasons to continue, not like, what my favorite activity was or anything. Well, number one, just because it's fun, like, and a lot of people like it, I mean, that's why we're all here, aren't we? Because we all have this course, and we wanted to continue. And it covers a lot, like, it covers neurology, epidemiology, and so much more. And like, it's just the tip of the iceberg, like, and if we do this in high school, then we could maybe find the bottom of the iceberg, like, who knows? And like, it, it helps kids who want to take medical classes in college a lot, like, if they want to be a neurologist, an epidemiologist, a physician, and more, like, it opens paths to like, so many careers, it's unbelievable. And like, it's just, it's unlike any other class, it's very intriguing, you don't have like, like, it's just, it's just a lot more loose and independent, and I think everyone likes that, because like, you just get to work in partners, you're not like, receiving a worksheet, doing the worksheet, and then just passing it in. It's very active and intriguing, and a lot of people like it, so I don't see why people wouldn't want it in a high school.
What grade are you guys all in?
We're all in seventh.
You're all seventh grade?
Yeah.
That's great.
That's really interesting to me. My daughter is in college, she's a sophomore, and in her anatomy class last week, they dissected a sheep brain. And she was sending me pictures, and I said, guess what? Our seventh graders, you're a little behind. Or you guys are way ahead, I don't know.
My son is taking anatomy and physiology here at the high school, and I don't think they've yet dissected the sheep brain.
Woo-hoo.
Tomorrow.
And he's a senior. So there you go.
We're getting college-level students. That's impressive.
Yes, it is.
There you go, it is impressive. Well, thank you so much for sharing. Is there anything else you want to tell us about the courses?
I know.
Okay.
I wanted to thank-
Now, I was just going to ask if anyone has any questions.
I wanted to thank you for the way you've explained everything, because we talk about project-based learning all the time, and the opportunity to not just memorize facts and do worksheets, as you've said well. But you've just talked about what we all talk about as project-based learning, getting together as groups, as teams, sharing things, looking at the whole problem together. So I wanted to thank you for that, because without even asking for a definition, we just got it firsthand-
Oh, I know.
-from, from the students. So I, I think that's wonderful, because we talk about this in education K to 12 all the time, and you just defined it great. So I can't thank you enough for being so clear and eloquent about the way you presented. Well done.
Very, agree. Rob?
So yeah, I thank you guys very much for coming and talking to us, and your excitement is palpable, so thank you so much. We, in between Chase and Luke, we didn't get your name, and we'd love for you-
Jackson.
Oh, sorry.
I'm sorry?
Jackson.
Jackson, thank you, we just want to make sure that everybody knows.
We all got Jackson.
That's right. Thank you.
Yes, absolutely. Brent, did you have any questions for our panel?
No, I just thank you for being the voice of your class, so thank you.
Ms. Sharon, how does this fit in with the schedule? So is this like, like, when my kids were in middle school, is this where Exchange City would be, so that that-
This is the enrichment class.
This is the enrichment class.
Yep, we have them for half a year, instead of just a quarter, so they're stuck with us for half a year.
Mm-hmm, that's good.
So they make seventh period every other day.
Okay.
And, yeah, they do, they do a great job.
And they combine both houses in the seventh grade, so they're all mixed up that way?
Well, Mrs. Ryan and I both teach it.
Yep.
So we're both house B teachers. We wanted to give the opportunity to everybody.
Everyone, yeah.
They took a survey in sixth grade to make sure they feel comfortable with the brain dissection to be part of the class, and that's how they were slotted for, for the course.
That's great.
Yeah.
Awesome.
Is the aim to expand it to, just to ask you?
To high school?
Yeah.
Absolutely.
No, to-
The rest of the middle school.
All of seventh grade.
I would love that. I feel like that would be, we have, and I don't know how much information I, has been confirmed, we talked about trying to extend it for the second half of the year, but we have financial literacy and our community-based program that we do the second half of the year. We'd love to give it to all of the seventh graders if the opportunity was available. I don't know if this is the year that it's the opportunity, but I don't know if we could offer it to kids next year in the eighth grade, I think that's a scheduling question.
Well, there are other modules that we have for other seventh graders, so we have green architecture as well, that some seventh graders, if they, if that was more aligned with their interests.
Oh, of the four modules that you all are doing, between the green architecture, the computer science-
Computer science.
Medical, okay.
Correct, yeah, design and modeling. So the plan is that next year we will add on app, app creators, I think it's called, app, something like that, for our eighth grade as part of the AP Tech, AP Tech. So every student will get that, and every student through their AP Tech gets computer science for innovators and makers. And then design and modeling, we're hoping, if we can make the schedule work, to move that into a sixth grade, that's the introductory course, so that every sixth grader will launch the program that way.
So the idea is this type of learning through Project Lead the Way to touch as much of-
That's right.
-our Hearn population as possible.
Correct, so through the core offerings in sixth, seventh, and eighth through AP Tech or computer, everyone would get it, and then there would still be this offshoot of more specialized electives that would cater to kids' interests, yeah, in the enrichment. Well, it'll be elective in eighth grade, and it's enrichment in seventh grade.
Got it.
Yeah.
And I would just like to say, kudos to the teachers, too, because giving up a week in the summer, and it wasn't easy. So Dr. Mello and all the scheduling, she figured out with all of the teachers to be able to get them. Some were in Maryland, some were in New Hampshire, some were, what was the furthest? Ohio?
Indiana, Worcester Polytech.
All over, in order to get the teachers to go, because it's so important for them to experience these activities and processes themselves, so they can troubleshoot like, what it's going to be like for the students in their classroom. So it really was a huge undertaking from scheduling, the three grants that she wrote as well, to be able to bring that. But you can see it, just like you said, it's fun. I mean, why wouldn't you want to do that? So you could see it right in the expressions in your face, that it is worth all of the teachers and all of the work they did this summer, and Dr. Mello, too, so just thrilled that you're excited as, as much as you are.
And they all know how to take your blood pressure?
We talked about white coat syndrome. But it was great, Mrs. Ryan's blood pressure, it was wonderful.
I know, I spoke with Mrs. Spinelli after she was one of your volunteers for her, and she loved her experience there, said everyone was very professional, all of the students, so.
That's great.
That's great. I, I'm glad to hear that we are pursuing the high school opportunity, so hopefully we can have it in place when these guys are ready for it in a few years.
I think they are the perfect, and Mrs. Sharon, absolutely the perfect ambassadors for this program.
Yeah, absolutely.
So thank you for all of your enthusiasm and sharing it with us.
Yes, thank you guys for coming. Thank you, Ms. Sharon, appreciate it. And thank you, Dr. Mello.
Thank you.
And Dr. Berdos.
Yeah, great leadership.
Yeah.
Surprise you didn't wear your white clothes on.
Karen will be upset.
Can I just end this, you're good? That's great, that's really exciting. While we're transitioning, while they're getting ready to go, who are the other teachers teaching the green architecture and the other modules?
Good question. So Mr. Noon teaches the green architecture. That one has the students interacting with the 3D design software that you see on like, HGTV. It's so cool to wa, and they're now actually building their scale models. We have Mr. Doherty, who has the 3D printer.
He's our teacher.
Yep, he has the 3D printer in his room, he's doing the design and modeling now. And then Mrs. Isaacson, who's doing the computer science for innovators and makers.
Thanks.
I think it was good to find a good place for it, because I think I told you, I had it in my high school, so 10 years ago I brought it to my high school, and we had two or three courses at the high school, but wherever it works at middle school or high school, wherever the right pocket is, and if that's what's going to work for us right now, I think it works great.
We can grab these guys when they're younger.
And you can build it, and you can build it and grow it, yeah.
Yes, definitely.
Brent, did you have some?
I was just curious, so you mentioned you have the Project Lead the Way, and I realize a lot of it's just startup funding from Project Lead the Way, Meditech, and Partners in Patriotism. What, at least in the four programs you have going right now, what's the, what's the need for sustainability funding after the grant is done?
It's a good question.
Is it just consumables? Is it subscriptions? What is it?
Yeah, no, it's actually not subscriptions, which is great and rare these days. The startup costs are where all the money is. The ongoing costs are pretty minimal and can be easily absorbed by our science budget that we already have. The one that was cost prohibitive, that we're still trying to see if we can get, is the automation and robotics. We have a robotics elective now at the high school. Did either, were either of you in the robotics? But our, our materials are kind of old, and there's not-
They get old fast.
Yeah. There's an opportunity for new robots, but the buy-in cost was prohibitive, so we're still going to try.
I would imagine the training was pretty, the expensive piece of this hearing.
Yes, and fortunately, the grant covers the training and the travel, which was huge.
Oh, that's good.
Yeah.
The travel as well, that's great.
Yes, yeah.
Well, they were great presenters, well chosen for tonight.
Yes, excellent.
All right, so moving on, if we're all done with Project Lead the Way, if nobody else has any other comments, we're moving on to FHS Overnight Travel, which is something we usually talk about about this time of year, every year, so. Some great trips coming up for our students, and Dr. Berdos, you're going to take the lead in this one?
Yes, I am. Mrs. Myers-Paclo was not able to be with us due to a, the death of a colleague, and so she was needing to be there at a celebration of life. So she's, she's with us here in spirit, but, because she's one that is such an advocate for these trips.
Yes.
Because they're such wonderful learning experiences for our students. So what you have here in front of you, they're all trips that you have seen in the past. I will call out the first one, the wrestling competition, which has not been on the overnight travel listing in the past, and the reason is, it's not far away.
Yeah.
And in the past, parents go with their children, and they typically weren't going to stay overnight, but then they found with being there early in the morning and being north of Boston and everything, so they decided, the students have stayed with their parents. And as a result, again, they're with their parents, and that continues to be the case today, but if the case comes forward to where maybe they're not with their parents and they're just with the coach, we thought it was best to go ahead and add it to the list that's here.
Yeah.
So that's why that one is here that you haven't seen in the past.
Well, and you can see why they'd want to stay over with weigh-in being at 7:30 on Sunday morning, so, yeah. No, they start early, so they check in at seven o'clock on Saturday morning. They go until 9:30 at night, and then 7:30 the next day, so.
They don't want to be driving at that, at those times.
No, no, and I would imagine the Booster Club will do some fundraising to, to help defray the cost of the, that's typically what happens when our sports teams travel, anyway.
Correct.
With overnight travel.
And many of them that you see there, they're tentative. As you know, it depends on how far they progress in the competitions. And we've been so fortunate to have them do so well in the past.
Yes, we have.
So they have been going on to those competitions.
That's right. Should we just go down the list and then can we, we generally approve all of the travel
Correct.
Sort of en masse?
Yes.
So, all right.
So the first one, the wrestling competition at the end of December. And that was the other piece, too. It takes place while we're not in school.
Right.
That's the other, that's why parents were going with their children. The Spanish exchange to Costa Rica in February of 2020. Our DECA students, the state championship, again, that's tentative, but I have full confidence that they will be
I do as well.
Competing there. That is in February as well. The French exchange, which is in April. The international competition for DECA, again, tentative, but again, really confident there at the end of April.
I think we've had kids go to the national, the national, international.
Yes.
Every year.
Yes, we have.
And it looks like he needs a chaperone, so we should really look into that.
That's right. He's got one.
Yeah.
Does.
And then the London trip in February with Dr. Wazlowski, the MASCE annual conference, which takes place down in Hyannis for our student council.
Student council, yeah.
And the history club's annual trip to New York City in April.
I just signed Sammy up for that.
It'll be here before you know it.
Yes, it's always a good trip.
The All-State Music Festival that takes place in March in Boston, the Festival of Music in Williamsburg, Virginia in April.
That's going to be quite a ride for those kids.
That is quite a ride.
That'll be fun, but that's a distance.
And essentially Ellington, again, we'll see what happens there. But we were so excited to be invited back last year and to come in in the top three.
Mm-hmm.
And that's May. And then Lox International White Plains, the track team in May as well.
And they have gone the last few years to that competition as well.
Yes, they have.
We've had some, some good success there, so.
You know, it's such, when you think about the opportunities that are here, whether they are cultural experiences, whether they are sports, you know, competitions, or on the business side, when you think about DECA and music, there's just so many different opportunities here for our students.
Do you guys have any questions? You look like you had a question, Chris.
I did not.
And want to leave you out.
No.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions for?
Just a huge thanks to the teachers for leading the charge on these, taking kids as groups and going overnight and experiencing that in a controlled environment in high school with great chaperoning is a great opportunity for kids. And so you need teachers to step up and do that. So good for them. And it's great to have the offerings for everyone. Really is great.
That's true. I know. My kids have gone on several of these trips and they're all, the band trips, the music trips are phenomenally well-run. The Ellington competition is an amazing experience. And I mean, I think we've gone on, not we, I haven't gone, but the boys have gone on every history club trip that Mr. Ferbert and Ms. Joseph and her husband have chaperoned over the last few years. So they're always fun.
What's also fantastic is when you hear back about our students.
Mm-hmm.
And just the wonderful kids that we have and what they are really, when they're showcasing what Foxborough, Massachusetts is, Foxborough High School, it really is, it's a nice feather in our cap.
I know. You told me about the emails you received after our students came back from Australia from the school over there. So, you know, really, you guys always represent us very well, the students.
They sure do.
All right. So can we can entertain a motion if anyone, if we're all done with questions? Would anyone like to make a motion to approve the FHS overnight travel?
I move to accept the FHS overnight travel request as presented.
Thank you.
Second?
Any further discussion? All those in favor? All right, four, zero, zero. Great. Good things coming up. All right. So the next item on our agenda is our school committee operating protocols. And you'll remember back in July at our retreat, we had a wonderful session with Dorothy Presser from MASCE. And one of the things we had talked about was coming up with some, some sort of standard operating procedures or protocols for our committee as guidelines, you know, not just for ourselves, but for future school committees and future superintendents many years from now. But, so I took a stab at, you know, coming up with a set of, a draft of the protocols. And I really would, we don't need to vote on this tonight. In fact, since Beverly's not here, I would, I would say we should wait for her on that. But I would welcome any thoughts or perceptions or comments, changes. So this was largely based on the Lynn Field School Committee's standard operating procedures. Those were the ones I was operating off of. I read all the ones, the examples that Dorothy gave us and seemed the most, to flow the most from what we currently do and the things we discussed on our, during our retreat. But I'm, you know, like I said, open to changes. If there's anything in here you do not think should be in here. I think a lot of it, Beverly said to me, she thinks a lot of it is intuitive. And I think that is true, but it is good to have it memorialized so that, you know, you can, if things did get off track, we can bring it back to center and have something, you know, concise. And I envision this as something that we would look at yearly and just sign off on when we do our, maybe do our district, you know, goals in the summertime to kind of just take a look and say, okay, are we doing this? Do we need to change anything? You know, how are we doing as a committee? So thoughts?
Well, first, I want to say thank you. This is no small undertaking. And I'm, we had chatted about it and I think all of us said, oh, yeah, we need to do that. Kind of sitting on our hands a little bit, maybe a little fearful or apprehensive perhaps at the end of our retreat. And I'm just very grateful that you took a stab at it and, and put something down because the hardest, the hardest draft is the first, by far, at least in my experience.
I think you're right.
So with that, I mean, because it's me and I'm annoying, I have a few just, they're tweaks, but honestly, overall, overall, I will say there's, like, even if I offered nothing in terms of, like, ideas for tweaks, and that's all I have, really, I could live with the document as is.
No, I'd like to hear the tweaks. Absolutely.
So first, I'm curious and I rely on my fellow committee members and admin for help on this in terms of the wordsmithing. I'm wondering, I love the organization. We've got the three kind of main headings, support, educational welfare, demonstrate professional, and dedicate ourselves to establishing. Do, is it useful or helpful to have something like relevant examples include after that? Like, that at least denoting that the bullets perhaps are not all inclusive? Just curious.
I think that's a good point.
And I trust, I trust y'all more than me.
How would you want to word that?
Yeah. Just so you have your sentence of like, this is the statement for the following, for the three headings, and then something akin to relevant examples, or relevant examples therein include, just to denote that ultimately what you're after is adhering to the spirit of the three main headings.
Right.
So are the bullets the relevant examples?
Yes.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking.
Yeah, and the bullets are relevant examples because the thing is, if
Got it.
If, if something came up that where we as a committee are not doing our duty under one of the three main headings, but it doesn't happen to be delineated in one of the bullets, I'd like us to be able to
Sort of an including but not limited to, kind of.
That whole thing. Yes.
But I, yeah.
And as the lawyer, I maybe suspect that I trust your language smithing on that point.
I think actually that's a very good point. I mean, you want this document to be sort of broad enough to give us sort of a framework, but not, and not limit us in any way via, you know, a roadmap for future school committees. But I do, I like that idea, relevant examples include.
Okay.
You know, we could put that in there.
Or actions. Yeah, yeah.
Actions.
Relevant examples or actions, because the bullets are all the actions, right?
Right, that is true.
So the three, the three items, the three items are the, we will do this, and here's the observable act, almost like observing, right? You state what you want and then you identify the actions that are going to identify that. So the bullets identify the actions that we will, will see exhibit.
Actions might be, actions might be a nicer word, too, actually, Richard.
Are the examples of actions, relevant examples of actions include?
Yeah, actions could include, will include, you know.
There you go.
You know, because if you say could or
Yeah, I like that.
Not limited to, yeah, I think that's where you were going to because it may not be all inclusive.
Yes, you just said it far better.
All right. So relevant examples, so the heading, and then relevant examples of actions include but are not limited to.
There you go.
And then a colon. And we could, you would put it under all three headings?
Yes.
Okay. That we can do.
That's the idea. And then following that, your second bullet, I thought perhaps is relevant to make the first bullet since it is
Oh, move it up?
As you say, above all else.
Yep.
We're here for kids. And if we're going to do what's right for kids, that should, we should start and end with that.
Fair enough.
I wondered when I was putting that bullet in, and I could go either way on this, where it says, interest in achievement of all students. I know we had talked about achievements versus outcomes at length during our retreat. So I wasn't sure if we wanted to say successful outcomes instead of achievements, or just leave it if I was, I felt like I was overthinking it myself when I was working on this, but I wanted to discuss it with the rest of the committee.
But you're in line with the discussion we had.
Yes.
Certainly.
That is, so it's something to think about. I mean, really, I know when Steve, Steve Uden was on the committee, he always wanted to marinate in something. So I really think we, we should, you know, discuss and marinate and then maybe vote on it, you know, next meeting.
That is something he would say.
Or within the next couple of meetings. So, but I can live with moving that up and we can
I like the move up. And I actually think the three words work.
I do.
I wouldn't even actually want to go too deep to successful.
Mm-hmm.
You know, to get too descriptive.
Right.
You know, it's open-ended. We're going to represent all the needs, interests, and achievements, just very broad. Because that's, that's the, that's the energy we should be doing.
I think so. Okay. Anything else, Brent? Or anyone?
Um, sorry, I lost my notes.
It's all right. We are not pressed for time tonight.
We'll be quick. Second section, second
Can I, can I just ask on first section before we go to the second?
Please.
On the third bullet?
Yes.
One of the wonderings that I had was, what comes to your mind as far as what would that look like or how we would measure that? I'm just curious if
Yeah. No, that's, that's actually, this is where you guys need to chime in. Yeah, right.
I mean, is that some
And how, oh, yeah, what, it seems relevant, but how should it sound?
Well, one of the things that immediately comes to my mind, and I think it was in some of the other examples, too, when we talked with Dorothy Presser, it's obviously the superintendent evaluation that falls underneath that.
Yep.
It's your school committee goals.
Mm-hmm.
So those are examples of what that's going to look like. Does that need to be delineated?
Could we put in parentheses, I E., superintendent evaluation, school committee goals, and any, you know, something, you know, any other relevant reporting data, something like that?
Right. Because I think that
Again, we don't want to
Yeah, if you, it's nice to have some examples there because we don't, nor is it our mandate and shouldn't be to go too far down into the weeds of specific.
It is still under your purview as far as your functions as a school committee.
Yes.
Okay.
You could almost say something like, ending that sentence with, clearly define, da-da-da-da-da, with relevant, and I had the word required in my head. Because there are specifics. So I appreciate what you said, Dr. Berdus, that
Yep.
There is a superintendent evaluation tool that's required for us to do. So we're not trying to create something to get out of that box or to avoid that, right?
Right.
So I was thinking in my head, relevant and required, or relevant and regulated.
But in the same breath, we are not, we are not evaluating specific faculty.
Correct. Without, without question, so we should be careful. So we should be careful.
Which is why I like, which is why I like delineating that.
Yeah, 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 I agree.
It's important.
And I think to the fairness of the superintendent and what we do, it shouldn't be a vague success and accountability either.
Right.
I don't think that's fair either for someone to just pull out, I've just determined new success, right, and new accountability. So I think that's important.
Because the common sense understanding of that is different than what our specific mandate
Could very well be to any given person and any member.
And I think when we talk about students, when we think of our last meeting on the baselines of benchmarks.
Yeah, yeah.
A lot of that is state mandated data collection and data reporting as well. So
Because you've got your district goal setting that you do, and then we have the goal setting
Yep.
On all of those different metrics.
Yes, you do.
And then we have the strategic planning as well, which is part of that. Okay. All right. Let's think about that.
It's almost like
That's a good point.
Yeah, it's almost discuss. I'm trying to think of the words, discuss or keep paramount discussion of success and accountability. I don't know, maybe clearly defined is too tight. I don't know. I, but
Well, I mean, combine, no, you're fine. But if you combine your, like, some, something like the, whatever, required accountability data.
Yeah.
I E., da-da-da-da. I think that kind of leaves it out of one sphere and doesn't drill it down to what's going on on any given day in one, somebody's classroom.
Right.
So we could put in parentheses after that and list some examples for the next time coming back.
Maybe that works. Maybe that just, just examples, examples work so that it doesn't get too, too loose.
Yeah.
In some ways.
I think that is, as I, you know, you and I talked about this, and I think that's a good point. And I think you and Brent, we both made very good points. I think that would help, certainly. Okay. And the next, demonstrate professional and collegial relations with one another. Are there any, other than adding in relevant examples of actions include but are not limited to? Are there any thoughts on this section? And again, I think these are all things that we are currently doing as a committee and functioning really well. But it is, I think it is helpful to have it laid out for, for new committee members and for the public if they have a question about how the school committee functions and how we operate as a, as a unit at this table and outside of this building and outside of our meetings, what our roles are.
One idea that I had is on the first bullet, the last clause, even in times of disagreement, which actually I like, I toyed with the idea of, instead of in times of disagreement saying, regardless of personal or policy positions.
Instead of even in times of disagreement.
Yes.
Personal or policy positions. I think that works. Okay.
I think the third bullet is good. I read that one over numerous times to make sure that it didn't go any funky directions.
So people know what we're talking about. The third bullet says, recognize that authority rests only with the majority decisions of the school committee and will make no independent commitments or take any independent actions that may compromise the school committee as a whole. So continue.
So I thought that was a good bullet, and I thought the word may was appropriate.
Mm-hmm.
So, because when I start, when I hit that first word, independent actions, I was like, okay, we have majority discussion, we have, that's right.
Right.
But every once in a while, I have an independent action or opinion, right? But, but the word may worked well so that without intent or something, my independent action could
Right.
Be different, but not compromise. So I think, I think that, I was fine with that bullet the way it came out. But I just wanted to say I put some thought to that one.
Yeah.
Because it's clear. It's very clear who and what, and how we function and govern.
Mm-hmm. Agreed.
Second bullet, the clause, avoid bias, which I love. I was perhaps hoping to extend that a bit to say, instead of saying avoid bias, to say, acknowledge and reduce bias.
Yep.
Because first you must acknowledge it.
That's a good point. Acknowledge and reduce.
Fourth bullet, I was fine.
The only problem with the fourth bullet, I would say.
What?
Doesn't our ethics agreement that we, we all do as public employees be, isn't it very clear that we must do the ethics agreement?
It is.
Which is clear that we will not do this and make decisions for personal gain?
So you don't think it's necessary?
I was kind of thinking agreeing that we're not going to do it for personal gain is far from what has already happened. That's where my mind was at on that one. Because I think the ethics test says we are not going to.
Right.
And we are bound by
Certainly.
So I'm not, I'm not even sure agreeing in this document gets us anywhere.
That's fair. Because everything else, everything else on here isn't in our ethics training.
That's, that's kind of what, yeah. But the partisan gain is good, though. So I, so I know we could, you could strike the whole thing, which might just be okay. But we got it, we can't do, even if we didn't agree or did agree, we can't do it.
Well, do you want to leave it in and just say, agree that our positions will not be used for partisan gain? Or do you think it should, the whole thing should be eliminated?
I could probably go either way. Any other thoughts? I mean, you could cross the whole thing out because I think the ethics thing took us there.
Because if we do something for personal gain, we should be tossed from the committee.
Absolutely. Yeah, I think that's what we did, yeah.
So, but I, so I support just leaving it as partisan.
I'm fine with that.
Okay. Just take out person. All right. Okay. All right.
I had a question. And actually, just to clarify meaning, Tina, from the fifth bullet, the meeting is a business meeting held in public, not a public meeting. And mostly that's just a point of information for me.
So I, I, I'll be honest with you, took this directly
No, it's okay.
From the Lynn School Committee document. And my read of it, because there are public hearings and where, where you invite, you know, the public to speak, but that we are conducting, you know, the public's business like, like a business. Like, this is a, a meeting where we're not, I mean, you see what I'm trying to say?
In that regard, it's different than, say, town meeting.
Right, exactly. Yeah.
Right. So if we
Because we have a public comment period.
We have a public comment period where we invite people to come in. Occasionally, when we are
Our votes are not.
We, we have, you know, in the past, recognized people who are here, who might, you know, have something to speak to on a particular, but that, that is within the purview of the chair to invite people up to speak. But it's not, so that's the distinction.
That helps.
I'm not sure I'm being very articulate about that.
No, it's good. No, it's good. I, I think, I'm glad you asked the question because I kind of went back for it, but I kind of thought there's some sense in there because there is business to be done.
I'm going to think if Dorothy gave us, she gave us so many materials.
She personally, I have no problem looking confused.
Yeah. I'm just, I'm just sorry. I'm just going back to Dorothy's thing.
No, it's fine.
So when she talked about, just going back to her MASCE document, when she talked[1762.16] when she talked about how school committees do business, that she used this exact language in her what protocols cover, and it says how it will do business. The board will conduct its business through a set agenda, which we do. Emerging items will be addressed in subsequent meetings through agenda items. We acknowledge a school committee meeting is a meeting of the school committee that's held in public, not a public meeting, will make every effort to ensure that the committee meetings are effective and efficient. To my mind, that also means that, and we don't see a lot of this here at this table, and haven't in the last 10 years that I can remember, but a lot of, like, grandstanding or political kind of agendas, you know what I mean? I don't think we operate that way, but that's my take on what she's trying to say. And she also says here, we'll base our decisions on available facts, you know, vote our convictions, that other bullet up there. So, those are how those things go together. Trying to think if there's anything else here.
I do think it's so much of what you already do as a committee,
Yeah, yeah.
and it's just putting it very public on a document that's there for the future, but at the same time, it's a really good communication tool for, you know, anyone that's curious as far as really what are the roles, responsibilities, and how we operate as a group.
Right. And I think we have been fortunate, I mean, going back, I mean, I don't know, I think, I've really been following the school committee since my time on the advisory committee, so that goes back about 10 years, and the committee has been fairly, you know, well-functioning as a group, you know, even when there has been differing points of view. Everyone's been respectful and, you know, conducted, it's just been a pretty good repertoire.
And the meetings have been effective, and they have been efficient, by the way it's been run.
Yes, exactly, but I think that's what it was getting at, but we can work on that language if it's confusing.
No. I feel much better now.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Anything else?
Section?
The third. And the third bullet is, or the third heading is dedicate ourselves to establishing and maintaining effective communication, and we would insert, you know, relevant examples of actions include but are not limited to under that, and then are there any other, any thoughts about these bullets as we go?
It just might be the word under the open meeting law, again. I don't need to respect it, I got to do it, with all due respect.
Adhere to?
Yeah, that's kind of where I was at.
And again, you shouldn't have to say that.
You shouldn't have to.
But, you know, I think, again, they were just trying to roadmap for future school committees.
I think that's a good term, is the roadmap, to really think about your three functions, and what does it look like in practice?
Right, right, so respect does work, too, so I'm not, and I wouldn't...
I could change it to adhere to, or...
We got to do it.
I think, I see that different than the personal gain aspect of things, in the sense that it's like, people are people, and sometimes they might have the temptation to talk about things that they, you know, and we shouldn't, there are certain things that you just don't talk about.
Even sometimes when something seems more efficient, like, you know, I could just email you something, but I can't, because it's an open meeting law violation, so I must adhere to it, even though, you know, whatever, and I would, so, but, anyway. I think putting, I think it is appropriate in this, you know, where effective communication in the open meeting law sometimes don't always go hand in hand, but we do respect it and we adhere to it, so I think we have to keep that in there. Because it is necessary, and certainly, you know, we're mindful of that as well.
Second bullet?
Yes.
Just an idea, and please don't agree just to shut me up, is the phrase, agree that there'll be no surprises. I love the sentiment, it's something that I push in my own management style. I'm curious if, and I mean that literally, I'm curious, if it's more accurate to say, to strive to ensure that there'll be no surprises.
Make every effort?
Yeah, make every effort, there'll be no surprises.
Yeah, I actually think that's probably...
Because even in our best efforts, I'm pretty sure that a group even this size, somebody's going to be surprised about something.
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
All right, make every effort to ensure. I think that, what do you think of that, Dr. Berdus?
I think that that makes total sense.
And then, second to last bullet, recognize the importance of working collaboratively with town officials.
Mm-hmm.
I, my idea is to just take out any equivocation there and just say actively collaborate with town officials.
Yeah, I like that better.
I think it ups the bar in that, rather than us recognizing that we should, it's just saying that, no, really, we got to do it.
Well, and we are doing it, so I think you're right, I like the more forceful language. So, actively collaborate with. And that is what we do. Good, all good. Okay.
Just as a side note, being that the school committee, M.A.S.C. conference, and M.A.S.S. conference last week,
Yes.
so you have the opportunity to speak with so many different school committee members from different districts, as well as, you know, other superintendents, and the things that are here, to be able to know, we do adhere to these things, and we have such, I think, a high-functioning school committee and the community that's so important, and that becomes very evident very quickly when you have the conversations, I'm sure, Richard, you probably experienced some of the same kinds of conversations, you know, in your days down there as well. The more you talk with people, and, you know, people are dealing with some of the same things in districts, and then obviously, they have some different challenges, too, but when you do actively collaborate and you know you have that with your town boards, it does make such a difference.
So, is there anything I forgot or left off putting this together? Anything you want to see that is not included? You can think about it, if you have an epiphany, or think about it, I think we should put these edits in and come back with another draft to look at with, and discuss with Beverly, and then take it from there at our next meeting.
I think it'd be good.
We, in a consensus on that?
Yes.
All right, so, moving on, the next item on our agenda is the 2020-2021 school calendar discussion. Dr. Berdus, you want to lead us off on this one?
I would be happy to. So, this next, it's hard to believe that it's November, and we're already thinking about the school year for 2020-2021. With that said, Labor Day, we typically start school after Labor Day. Faculty and staff comes back for three professional development days prior to that time period at the end of August, but Labor Day falls as late as it can this next school year. And this has happened in the past, and when it does happen in the past, when it has happened in the past, the conversation is brought forward, do we want to start with students before Labor Day? If Labor Day is falling so late because of what it does with the rest of the year, the calendar. So, what you have in front of you are two calendars, one that would show option one, which is yellow, which would be our traditional, starting with students after Labor Day, which means the students would start September the 8th, and the last day of school would be June 21st, assuming no snow days, otherwise it would go to June 28th, would be the last, if we had the five snow days. The second option in blue shows if we were to bring students back before Labor Day. Again, they still wouldn't be starting school until September, but they would start on September the 1st, they would have the Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, a long four-day weekend with Labor Day, and then back on the Tuesday, where they've already had three days in school. So, when this has happened in the past, we had one time where we did go really late, and then the most recent time, we went with the earlier start date. We had a survey with teachers to see what, the F.E.A., the Foxborough Education Association, put that out with teachers, and they came back that last time and said they wanted to start before Labor Day. And some of the reasons were, when we think about, for instance, at the high school, advanced placement tests, those tests are already predetermined, the dates, you have, doesn't matter where in the country you're in school and you're taking those tests, so if you're in the South as an example, they're starting school in August, so they already have some extra time, and when we're thinking about those dates, it's going to make a difference if you start later. At the same time, when we think about going to school later in June, optimal learning time, is it to be in school on June 28th versus to have the days more front-loaded, if you will? So, those are some of the conversations. So, teachers would still come back in August for their professional development days, but again, the question to the committee for discussion, not to vote on it this evening, is really just to put the two options out there to have a discussion, and I can tell you from the F.E.A. side, their preference is for option two, for students to return before Labor Day, and from the administrative side, that was theirs as well. At our last administrative meeting, we brought the two calendars forward and asked as far as preference. Again, the optimal learning time is, it's more advantageous earlier in September than it is towards the end of June, and the other part of that is if you do have those snow days and you're starting to get towards June 28th,
Yeah.
it's a little dicey.
You've been there before, it's not fun. The last time we moved the start date up before Labor Day, that was 2015?
Yes.
Just a reminder.
And you had three professional days for the teachers then as well? So, that's the most unique thing I found about this, is that I've experienced school districts with a couple, only a couple professional days, so they've gone Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday for students, and then Friday was off, so, that's, yeah, I've been in schools to do that, but with the three professional days, there's not much room to do anything else probably but this, I guess.
And the days are a day off from what we've just experienced this past August.
Joe, did you have something you wanted to say? You can come up to the microphone.
Yes, I wanted to add something, yeah. Even though that you're thinking of high school sports, even though if you go back before Labor Day, you can't, you only can start high school sports 11 days before Labor Day, which is set by the M.I.A.A. to take in the, doesn't matter with sports, you can only start on a certain day, set by them, right, Mr. Pearson?
That is correct, actually, next year, the sports can start on the Monday, the 24th. There's a new rule for, so, sports can actually start three days earlier than they used to.
Or two weeks before Labor Day, correct?
That's correct, can't start the games any earlier, but sports, fall sports can actually, practice can start three days earlier than it used to, and football starts even a few days before that.
Wow, and then, because then, like, preseason before Labor Day, and regular season starts after, right?
That's correct, so schools will have the option to practice on as early as Monday, the 24th, which they didn't in the past, because Joe's absolutely correct, it used to be Thursday. You couldn't start practice till Thursday.
Did the M.I.A. make that change because more schools are starting before Labor Day these days?
I think there's probably multiple reasons, it was a rule change proposal put in last year by one person, and I think some people have a belief that since football is already starting on the Friday, which is five days earlier than all the other sports, they felt that they were already in school, they felt that students were coming back onto campus already, so why not start practice for all students to have some conditioning a few days earlier? So, I think that, I think just the whole thing got a little bit of energy around. We're all here, we're all doing it anyway, so let's bring everyone in earlier.
Okay, well, that's interesting in light of this discussion, certainly. Thank you, Joe, for bringing that up.
Just point of, just reminding us all,
Yeah.
which of our buildings are currently air-conditioned in the classroom spaces?
Just to hurt.
Just to hurt, correct? Okay. It's hotter in June.
Yes.
Just saying, it's going to be hotter in June. And then the other thing is, if I can go, what, do you guys have an opinion?
About the air conditioning?
No.
We know you have an opinion.
Definitely have an opinion on that.
Even though I think we all do, and if we could turn back time, everybody would change it, but, no, in terms of thoughts on the...
Start date, yeah.
Start date, just curious.
I mean, not really, I personally, like, I'm like a morning person, so I like to kind of get things like, out of the way, like, in the beginning of the day, so I feel like it kind of goes with the calendar, too, like, I'd honestly be fine, I mean, I'm not going to be here next year, but I'd still... I'd be fine with starting earlier and then getting out in June, like, three days before, or whatever, or, you know, like, a whole week before, like, I don't know, that seems like, I'd prefer that, but that's like a personal thing, I think.
Kiara, you are going to be here next year, so what do you think?
All on you, Kiara.
Oh, boy.
I honestly don't have an opinion, either one really works. School's still school, I have to go whenever, so...
Still going 180 days.
I do think, though, one of the important points on the sports thing and music and everything else is the kids, it's not like the kids aren't back here at that time, anyway. So, you know, you're not making a decision against families who are going to do things, because if the kids are in sports, or if they're in band, or anything, they have to be back here already, anyway.
At the high school level, yeah.
Right, right.
I will say that over, of all the topics that have been discussed over my last seven years on the school committee, the calendar switch was probably one of the most hotly debated, and probably the one I received the most phone calls about.
I imagine.
Because people do, one reason I wanted to start this conversation in November is because people are already making plans for their summer vacations, and a lot of people feel very, very strongly one way or the other about this, so, that being said, you know, I just wanted to have us time, have us have time to have a thoughtful discussion and talk to people, and, you know, make the right decision going forward.
I mean, there are districts that don't decide this, or at least advertise it until March, and that's just, it's just inconvenient for students and families.
No, I think that the sooner we can decide it and get word out there, if there is going to be a change, or if there isn't, you know, it will let people know, you know, certainly what they need to do. Plus, people put their kids in camps, too, and, you know, some of the camps start before, before, if we were to go until June 28th, there are a lot of camps that start earlier than that, so that creates a conflict for parents as well.
As it does, it's equally complex in the late August, early September.
Right. So, the more notice, I think, we can give parents and families in town better.
June 21 with snow to 28 is way too late. In my personal opinion, way too late.
And we've bumped up against that before.
I'm sure, we all have every school district has, but 21st and 28, that's just far too late. If we have an option, and we do have the support of the F.E.A. and administration, it makes all the sense in the world, I think.
So, with the returning before Labor Day, just to make sure I'm clear, the last day of school would be the 16th of June?
Correct.
And then, if there were snow days...
The 23rd would be the last day. As opposed to the 28, as Richard said.
Okay.
So, there was one other piece that I wanted to bring up, that you had in your packet here,
Yes.
which is a, is a list of different holiday observances that are actual dates for this 2019-2020 school year. So, this is something, we've talked about, what are ways that we can make visible opportunities to celebrate the changing demographics that we have, and really look at the different cultures that students and what they're celebrating themselves? So, what we are proposing is to have, on the back of the calendar, we have the traditional end-of-term dates, the holidays that are actual holidays out of school, but we wanted to add to the back of this calendar, and so you have in front of you, it says, "An increasingly diverse school district. Foxborough Public Schools celebrate the many cultures represented among our families. The school calendar includes a list of holidays that are not days off from school, but are placed on the calendar to recognize the growing number of students who celebrate these holidays. F.P.S. has listed the holidays below to increase awareness among students, teachers, and staff, that these are significant holidays for our student population." I had just a conversation with a parent last week, and talking about whether it's Ramadan or the Jewish holidays, that they're all very significant to our students, and just to bring an awareness, it was another way that we could make visible the other holidays and observances that many of our students celebrate or observe.
I think that's a great idea, the ones that are days off from school will be listed in bold, and then the others are listed, but this is for information, so that is, that's really great.
And this, and the list of calendar dates, it does come from the Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, they actually don't have up there yet, and I started to look, and they're all over the place when you look at them individually, so I thought, as the example would show you what this current school year dates are, but then on the calendar going forward, we would just list those as well, to be able to really recognize the growing number of students that are changing within our community.
Oh, I think that's definitely a step in the right direction, and I think it'd be good help also for our teaching staff in their planning and trying to avoid conflicts for students who are celebrating specific holidays that we do not... Conflicts for students who are celebrating specific holidays that we do not, um, have the day off from school, but, you know, to try and accommodate, you know, their, their schedules as well.
Yes.
What about one more piece? Uh, on the back of the calendars, that we have the word holidays with a colon, would it be worth adding to that holidays with day off from school, so that it doesn't just say the word holidays because we're passing on another sheet with a whole bunch of other holidays?
You're talking about changing this whole thing, putting this.
Oh, they're gonna change the whole thing.
And then you've got the bold that's there.
I misunderstood, so it's replacing the whole, that whole second page.
It's that, that.
That section.
It's replacing that section at the bottom only.
Sorry, I misunderstood.
Now, making that all happen on one side?
Oh, you can do it. Well, that's probably what happened.
Janet can do that, right?
She's a font master.
That's probably what happened to me, 'cause I couldn't visualize that replacement. I'm all good, I'm good. Janet, you can do it. Thank you.
Some columns might be good.
But it does, to your point, Richard, it does have to be very clear.
Right.
So families understand which dates are not present in school.
These are the ones that are off. Yeah, but these aren't just the only holidays, these are the ones without school, and these are all the holidays.
Correct, and we'll make sure that is very clear.
Definitely very clear.
I got it, I got it now, yeah.
Yes, two columns.
That's what I'm thinking.
I think that's a, that's a great idea.
Very good.
So, as, as far as just back to the calendar discussion, does anybody have anything else they would like to? So I think we should think about this one and.
Fine.
And come back and vote on it at a future meeting, hopefully in December, get it wrapped up.
Sure.
Is that acceptable?
I think that's fine, I think that's fine.
That's fine.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, well, thank you. All right. Moving on, now we're at other matters. Dr. Barados, would you like to begin?
Well, I'll start off with the wonderful production of the Addams Family that took place this past weekend. That was a lot of fun, and, um, the kids continually amaze me with, some of them, the amount of lines that they have to learn and the songs and, but it, it was just, it was a lot of energy and it was, it was a lot of fun. And, um, we have our cheerleaders who are.
Yeah.
Going on, and, um, I'm trying to think, I think that's the only group right now that's going forward. All of our sports seasons are wrapping up, starting to think about winter sports, got a lot of banquets with different teams taking place.
You know, I didn't see, when we approved the, you said the cheerleaders, I didn't see an overnight travel for the cheerleading team. Um, I don't know if they're going, I, we should check on that.
Okay.
Going forward, because I, I believe they have in the past traveled.
Because it's in Worcester.
Florida last year. The, the, the next step for them is in Worcester. But if, if they do go forward.
Forward.
We should just follow up on that, so that we, if they are traveling.
If they.
We have approved their travel, so they can fundraise and move forward with all of that. But congratulations to our cheerleaders and congratulations to all of our athletes who move forward, you know, over the, yeah, absolutely.
Yeah.
Lot of good things. Anything else?
That's all I've got on the.
Your, your superintendent's coff, coffee and conversation?
Thank you, that's, that's Thursday night, taking place at the Voiden Library at 6:30. Again, that's for anyone that wants to come and sit with myself and Dr. Mello. There's not really a set agenda, it's for questions that they bring forward, but we always have plenty of information to share of what's taking place. So that's Thursday, typically it's Tuesdays, but the library was not available, so that schedule went out a couple weeks ago, but I'll send out a reminder.
What time again, please?
6:30.
Thank you.
All right. Who would like to go next? Dr., hello?
Sure. We are gearing up for the book fair at the Ahern Middle School, it's a multi-day event, and I know there's a lot of people putting a lot of effort into making it spectacular, so come one, come all.
I've worked at many a book fair. The kids are always excited. Glad we're still, we still have.
Still have the book fairs.
Actual books.
Yes, that's right.
To put in their hands. That's great. Richard?
I, I was just gonna, uh, mention that I was fortunate to meet Abby, I hope I say the last name right, Hasman.
Yes.
Uh, she was recognized, uh, in the Hockemock League.
Yeah.
As a, uh, the female representative for the Hockemock League to the cross-country banquet.
Yeah.
So when we're, when I was at the banquet this week, I was able to see Abby and Coach Wayne Relva.
That's fantastic.
So it was great to have them representing the Hockemock.
And she did well in the state tournament this weekend, too.
She and Ryan.
In the freezing cold.
Saw her on Twitter.
It was cold there. It was cold and windy.
It was cold.
They all running their short-sleeve shirts up and down a golf course in 20-degree weather.
Yeah.
Good for them. It's amazing to see, it's, it's great, I mean, it's really a great sight to see thousands of kids running, but it's wild, it's cold, it was cold.
I think it was cold.
Was it cold?
It was cold.
Richard, since Bevy, who is our MAS C representative to, the, the conference is not here, do you have anything you want to share with us about last week's conference?
Oh, good, oh, yeah, uh.
Sorry, didn't mean to put you on the spot, but.
Well, no, 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 I mean, it, it's always the, the, the conference is always a great collaboration for a school committee to be there with fellow school committee colleagues as well as other superintendents. And so I was able to, you know, a, a lot of people that I'm fortunate to know and have experience with, and, uh, just, you know, a lot of different, uh, activities and events that you can go to if you ever get the time to free up a day or so, just that different, uh, different sessions on, on just a plethora of topics.
Mm-hmm.
Anything you could think of.
I've always enjoyed it, I'm sorry I couldn't go this year.
And then, of course, the, the culminating, uh, on Friday evening was Bevy's Lifetime Achievement Award.
Saw some nice pictures of you and Beverly on Facebook.
Yeah, so it was great, and, and her son was able to come up as well, too.
That's nice.
So it was, it was a great event, and.
Thank you for representing us.
And really recognizing the, uh, for the MAS C to step up and, uh, and do that and recognize that kind of level of service.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, is really, really wonderful, because it's truly, uh, this range of volunteer service across the state that makes it all tick, right?
Right.
And so, um, kudos to everyone that gets recognized for their years of service.
Thanks, Richard.
Yes.
Rob?
Nothing for me.
Okay. Mr. Utna?
Um, on, uh, November 26th, the Board of Selectmen, one of their meeting agenda items is, uh, budget goals, um, so they're put out an open invitation to the school committee and, uh, other boards to be there. Um, it's an 8:30 start, so it's a little late, but, uh, based on their agenda, that's where it sits. Uh, if there's gonna be obviously more than a couple of you, we would need to post that meeting, but probably should just do it just in case.
Yeah, I, I think we should just post it and then.
What's the date again?
It's Tuesday.
It's, uh, 11/26 at 8:30, Tuesday.
Thank you.
So.
Thanks.
And then my only other thing is, uh, we did, uh, start the process out at the Borough School today, um, they started doing some land clearing and, uh, started a little bit of excavation, uh, work. We actually expect by Wednesday that we will actually be into the ground to start the foundation work, so.
That's cool.
Very exciting.
We're just moving along, it, uh, didn't seem to be too disruptive today, and, and hopefully it stays that way, so.
I, I asked my, one of my children, and they said, wait, what? So it seems like it was quiet. And that kid is distracted by everything.
Good to know.
So, so, well done.
It's good to know we have our own little man on the scene there.
He's a man on the scene.
That's great. Excellent. Thank you, Bill. Could you, yeah, actually, could you, um, explain about Rosie's Garden, you, what you were telling us, how that's being taken care of before we move on?
I think many people do know what Rosie's Garden was as a dedication, um, but it's been there for a number of years, and it was on the end of the building that the, um, excavation and work is gonna be going. So, um, the contractor who won the bid, CTA, actually hired an outside landscape or, um, nursery to come in and, and take the major plantings out and to store them at their own site, uh, which is actually good, 'cause it'll be off-site, so they won't get damaged. Plus, they're a professional group in which they can dig these things, these are mature, many of these are mature trees and plants and stuff that they're moving, so, um, I was very happy to hear that they're doing that, but, uh, they, I guess they will be doing that over the next couple days, um, and, and moving all that stock out of the way. Uh, and then in the end, it will, there's a new location on the, on the, uh, site, um, basically right off the pre-K wing that they will be reestablished.
That'll be great. Excellent, thank you, Bill. Chris, Kiara, do you have anything, anything going on in student council land that you wanna share with us? Nope. Okay. All right. I know you're doing a cookie dough fundraiser, 'cause I, uh, I've, I purchased mine, so.
Thank you.
Good luck with that. Get out there and sell that cookie dough. Janet, do you have anything for us?
I'm all set, thank you.
All right, I just had a couple things. The BIT auction is this Friday, um, at the Lakeview Pavilion, and I know, um, I was looking online, you can also, if you can't go, um, I think they're almost, their tickets are almost sold out, so if you don't have tickets, you might not be able to get in at the door, from what I, I saw on their Facebook page, but you still can participate online now that they have the online auction, and they have a whole bunch of great items, um, up for auction, so we appreciate all the hard work that our, our PTOs do in making the BIT happen, and they really raised the bulk of their funds for enrichment programs, uh, for all three elementary schools through this auction, so we wish them the best of luck. Um, we have our parent-teacher conferences next week at the Ahern and, uh, the high school, and I think online signups are.
All online signups.
Are happening now, uh, started last, started on Tuesday, I believe, last Tuesday, the 12th. And, um, we talked about the budget discussion, the only other thing I wanted to mention to the rest of the committee is, uh, next Tuesday, November 26th, in the morning here at the high school, it's Career Day. Um, I went to Diana's principal's coffee, and Ellen Pillsbury was speaking about Career Day. She is, if anyone is interested, she will have badges, uh, for the school committee members if anyone wishes to attend, and they have three sessions for the kids, the juniors and junior and senior class are all doing this, and you can pick, um, three different sessions and they will rotate you around. Ellen has 35 presenters, and of the 35, 27 of them are Foxborough High School graduates who will be discussing their businesses and careers, so. Cool. Should be a good day, and that's it, that's all for me. Uh, would anyone like to make a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Any further discussion? All of those in favor of adjourning, 400, good night, everybody.